About seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, so if you wish to, agenda is presented. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Moving on to the regular council meetings of 24th of September. Any questions? Some Georgia Lee moves. Any question on Georgia Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Let's carry it. Okay, so we're at the public hearing portion for bylaw number 1475-18, inclusion of cannabis retail amendment to our land use bylaw number 1437-15. As Kim has said, it's been advertised and nobody has made comment. We do have Nora, if you would like to address us of what your comments or questions or concerns are.
Well, just that the whole thing frightens me and I'm... Nothing you wonderful people who run it down so wonderfully well can do about that. This is coming from somewhere else. It's not what you said I should be saying, sir.
Not at all.
Anyway, I was quietly minding my own business the other night watching the Penguins in Canadians and I was more worried if Kerry was ever going to be able to stop another puck after his injury. And I was worrying Crosby was doing more work than ever, was he ever going to score again? And suddenly across the screen flashed young child in Vancouver taken by air to hospital. She'd got busy and had some gummy bears infused with cannabis and she was in dire straits. And then a little while later, they wouldn't let me watch this hockey game. The next thing I knew there was federal officials telling me that this plan, many details hadn't been worked out yet. And I thought, oh, that's wonderful. And then I read in Calgary Herald, I love the media by the way, and you never get anybody from the advocate here, or do you send this?
Both, sometimes they're here, sometimes.
Because I'd like to praise them for keeping Bob Monroe and Peter Pickford Gill's wonderful paper alive. Because I'm on to few and those now, when you go to few and those and they're telling the people's story. They have pictures from the advocate there and the advocate covers, and they covered this very, very well. They had it in several sections, they mentioned you talked to Ian, you mentioned you had talked to Steve Hardy. They covered it all, how you done your due diligence, so you folks are doing a beautiful job. Then in the Calgary Herald said all together on the 17th, there'll be 17 stores open. Thirteen in Edmonton, three in Mid-Senhaton, two in Calgary. So it appears that AGLC, the big bosses say they'll have 250 stores open within the year. And, well, that's fine and dandy, but the problem is, and then I get the little handle and says, don't worry, the 18-year-old, no way can people who aren't of the right age get it. Well, all these years as a young parent, this is before I learned how to be a proper one, I kept hearing stories about beer bottle hill and bitching bins. These people found beers somehow neighboring 18-years-old. And that's what I worry about, if there's a handy source for this wonderful material, they'll be getting it. They'll find a friend that is of the right age to go. I'm sorry, but, no, my kids actually grew up pretty well despite knowing where the two places were where they indulged in bad stuff. Anyway, all I'd want to say is it just seems that this is coming, it's not planned for, and it just sort of worries everybody, just how it's going to be handled. Number one, it says too that the RSCMP are not ready for THC blood testing. I feel sorry for them. And they say, oh, you can't drive in the car and smoke it, you can't do this, you can't do that. Then I read this little pamphlet here and it was wonderful, I don't know if that came through, my wonderful $1.25 advocate, which I love paying for, hi. I'm just nattering. And this wonderful thing made this statement. And the lady that was working for County of Vulcan was a bar girl in Amilow. And in that it says, the 218 survey found that Alberta was third in cannabis consumption behind Nova Scotia and Ridge Columbia, so we're already third behind in this. Maybe our friend, that other guy in Ottawa should have got this going sooner, we could be first then. And it says that their smoking rates are down the normal smoking rates. And as you see, I'm doing my asthma routine, I think because too many people around me were doing the smoking, but that's just my personal, the other wacky. Anyway, all I'd like to say is I think they're moving too fast. And right now they're starting to quote how many illegal. The other day, the United States wonderful people at their customs, and they said how many of this stuff, huge materials they were finding that was trying to get into Canada. Like this wonderful outfit says, oh, no, we can manage it, it's all under control, but I just, I just wish it were, I wish they'd waited longer. And maybe this legal stuff, well, maybe they should take that other stuff and put it in so it's legal. What do you call it, fentanyl? Maybe that would stop people from, I know I'm lost, when I did, I'm sorry, but there, I'm done. We're just worried, but it's not a year, you've done all you can and we praise you for all you do for the county, you're pluses, okay? And that wonderful crew you hire that Stu works with, they're wonderful too, so you hire good people. Okay, is that your result?
Sure.
Okay, thank you for listening to me.
Okay, no, thank you.
But I couldn't go home and then I get one of my great friends had never been warned of all this stuff, so I did my part, now shut up, okay?
Okay, thanks Nora. Did you want to address the public hearing?
No ideas came out of your address.
Oh, okay, okay.
You may shake your hand.
Well, we allow 15 minutes for public hearing, so we still have another approximately nine minutes to go, so... Did you want to address us at all or anything, or I know there was, you did a good job last time when we...
I can give a recap of what we did.
Sure.
Want to kill a few minutes of those thirty minutes?
Sure.
Just briefly, so the planning commission, we met with the planning commission, Nancy and myself, on two different occasions, reminded the members that it was going to become legal October the 17th and, you know, there might be some upset people questioning approach to the town to open retail cannabis stores. So we reviewed with the Alberta Gaming and Liquor Commission and put out as far as setbacks, different regulations, and we discussed the fact that the municipality has the option to change some of those criteria, that we've worked with them. We followed, for the most part, the same criteria that the Alberta Gaming and Liquor Commission has set out. The only one I can think of off the top of my head was that they made a recommendation about the hours of operation. And I think we said that we'd let the market determine if we're going to shorten it or leave it as is. But other than that, we left the distances at 100 meter from the schools, hospitals. And that, actually, in the town of Vulcan, that doesn't really affect much because it doesn't touch the commercial area, so... That's it. We made some recommendations obviously for the zoning, we included new definitions, we included a parking requirement for retail cannabis, and introduced cannabis itself, retail cannabis itself as a definition to use. So that's kind of the reader's digest version, we met twice, it was advertised in the media, it's a requirement for a bylaw. We did that, and that brings us here today.
Great, thank you.
What's there ma'am? They're very organized. For you to give the most precious thing you have time, it much we appreciate it, even if the rest of the town don't turn up for this. They must, you see, they tell me with what we do with any group I work with, you don't get proud of people complaining, that means they're happy, so everyone's happy.
Appreciate, so anything else on this bylaw? Number 1475-18? Hearing none, I will officially close the public hearing and we will move on to the rest of our agenda. And again, you're more than welcome to stay if you like, or...
I think it's fascinating.
We'll see when you get to the end. But again, you're welcome to stay or you can...
I'll wait for the bylaw then.
We'll wait for the bylaw. Okay, so the next item we have is our correspondence, 5.1, a thank you letter from four ladies that went to New Brunswick to curl. And they sent a card saying thank you very much for our support.
And came home with a silver.
I suggest the town send them a letter saying congratulating them or having silver.
No, because all we did is just...
No, just to say, since they're representative.
Nope, that's great, so Laura moves, we sent a thank you letter for their representing our communities and... Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, now we'll move on to bylaw number 1475-18, inclusion of cannabis retail amendment to our present bylaw. We have given it first reading, it's gone through advertising, public hearing, and is there anybody wish to move it second time? Love? Any question on Lyle's second motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Let's carry it. Okay, moving on to the third reading.
So move.
Okay, thank you. Any question on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Let's carry it. Okay, now we'll move on to new business. Current business, I guess it is, the organizational meeting, so next, Kim has suggested that we have our organizational meeting on the 22nd. Thank you very much for driving up.
No problem.
We appreciate it. Just drive careful on the way home.
All right, thank you.
Thanks again. Okay, so Kim has suggested that we have it on the 22nd. What we can do is move the, our regular meeting to a later time, or we can start our organizational meeting at six.
I have a favor to ask, would you be able to start at seven? I have a doctor's appointment that I've waited since last February to have, and it's at 2:30 on, in Calgary that day.
Sure, no, we can do it at seven if that works, and then we'll just move our regular meeting to like 7:30 or eight o'clock.
Yeah, sorry about that.
It doesn't take long anyway.
No, I don't think so, I mean, and that goes back to take a look at your communities, there are some that, you know, have, you know, made, mentioned that they'd like to to take on different positions or give up their positions or whichever, so... If it's agreeable, we'll still do the same format, go through each one and see if you wish to let your name stand. If somebody else wishes to let their name stand, then we'll have a vote on it. Okay, so we'll send that out prior to it?
Yes, we will.
Okay, so somebody wished to move the organizational meeting to, for the 22nd at seven?
I just had a horrible thought, I don't think it is on the 22nd. So we could go with six.
It doesn't matter.
I probably looked it up, but I now am beginning to question myself.
I'd like seven because I don't get off work till six.
Okay, no, that's fine.
The only thing that could affect it is a delegation that was coming, so that'll push the delegation closer to eight o'clock.
Yeah, okay, do we have a delegation for that meeting?
We do have one.
Oh.
Good lineup.
Or do you want to do the organizational at the end of the meeting?
You can do that as well.
Yeah, as long as we do it in that timeframe.
Yeah, you have to have it done in the third week of...
Yeah, so we could do it the other way around, do it at the end of our...
Yep.
Yeah, that doesn't impinge on the delegation.
So we'll do the organizational meeting to be held October 22nd following the business of the regular council meeting. We'll write the motion that way.
And that way if something does happen, you know, nobody has to worry about missing it. Is that, okay, is that agreeable?
Yep.
Somebody make that motion, sorry?
Sure.
Paul? Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Let's carry it, thank you. Okay, Black Friday event request. Has anybody got any comments or questions on...
They usually light up, decorate the tree.
Yeah, the trees decorated at the same time the lights go up on the streetlights, so what we would do is just postpone plugging them in and rig up something so that Tom could actually flip the switch or...
Yeah, sure.
To light the tree up, shouldn't be a, shouldn't be a huge...
Clap.
You could put a clapper on the wall. Might not work out later in the year.
I can just picture when everybody starts clapping after the clap, they're going to clap.
The light's going to flash off at the moment. But yes, we can accommodate that as long as it works with the schedule for council to have down.
Okay, any questions on their request? This is something different that they thought we'd try and... Okay, somebody wish to move this? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Let's carry it. Okay, moving on to the 7.3, the grant application request for ACP grant. So this is different than the ACIP?
Yes.
It's different than the one that we applied for before? It's quite self-explanatory, it has a smaller amount than the one that we applied for. This one here is a $70,000 one.
You have it with what, 200,000?
A hundred, a million if...
Up to a million.
Oh, up to a million.
Yes, and these complement each other, the Lions Club are applying for the million-dollar seat and the town is going to apply for this infrastructure.
This one's federal and the other was, is it federal or into this?
Yeah, but it's all taken care of by the province, so...
Laura moves it? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Let's carry it. Okay, the next one is the SEWA request for letters of support. There was two letters of support, you know, templates there. The Wheatland County is applying for one and the MD of Big Horn is applying for the other one. And one is to do the siting study and the other is to do the geotech on the siting.
So did these two communities just kind of say they would take it on as, so somewhere in that group, two people had to do it, sort of?
Yes, while we're, yeah, somebody had to do it, you know. And that's the way all their funding has come from so far, is some community has sponsored it, like Coldale has sponsored some.
We did, we sponsored one.
We sponsored one, the county has sponsored the very first one, kind of thing, so it has been well supported by the majority of the members.
So with the ACP grants, you can apply for two in a year, and so that's why they've been moving them around. SEWA, if SE Vulcan did one for SEWA, then they could save one for themselves, kind of thing, so...
So if, say, we have done one, then we couldn't apply for something of our own?
Something of our own, so...
And that was partly some of the discussion that we had, too, Kim and I had a bit, too, is because of the ones that we're applying for, for the Skooma Pool, we didn't want to make sure that one affected the other, so some of the other municipalities, you know, came to the table and said that they would, so... All this is, is a letter of support, we support this, and just to try and hopefully get it through, so...
So move.
Okay, Paul moves that we... For both of you?
For both.
Both.
That's the way the...
Yeah, two letters of support, that's the way the motion's worded.
Okay, any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Let's carry it. Okay, now the SPOCK days is requesting us to host a grant application through the community foundation.
And with this, we have to host the grant, and so that means they do the application, we hold the funds, and we do the reporting for them at the end of it. The reason why they want to use the funding from the Lethbridge Foundation is for the purchase of the C camp, for storage of their materials. Again, falls into that community storage area that we've used and put in place of a public work yard. And the community foundation grant, this won't affect any other application that we're going to make to them as well, so...
Yeah, the community foundation is the one that has a small grant allocation and...
Yeah, then they're more geared at community groups. The municipality can, we every now and then can access funding from them, but the majority of it is for nonprofits in our communities, so...
Okay, Laura moves that we host this grant. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Let's carry it, thank you.
We have to give them verbal permission to say that they could store it down there, or is that just a given?
No, once they do the application, then they'll go through the process with the Bellman officer, have the C camp put it in the yard there.
Yeah, there'll be an agreement that...
Yeah.
Set up, so... Okay, so moving on to the tourism committee. Formation of a tourism committee from the society, separate from the society, so it was discussed by the, well, it's read by the tourism society and recommended that, you know, one elected official from the town, one from the county, chamber of commerce, and four members at large by the town. George Lee?
The other night when we discussed this, I was not in favor of this at all. I thought that we should have two representatives on that committee and one from the county, where we are the major monies now for the tourism.
Right.
In that, and I just thought best interest of public funds for, like, public talent funds, I was just more interested in putting two members on that committee instead of the one.
But I think it'd be kind of basic, similar to what the rec department is, it's more about programming more so than a dollar and cents. You know, like, we will as council set the budget from recommendations from it through administration, and so I think...
But on the rec board, the county pays almost half of the rec is what we pay, but now on Peter Dawson, they are the majority of funds for that, and there's two that sit on that and only one town member.
Right, and it was based on an assessment value. And the county, of course, has a huge assessment compared to the town's assessment, so that's why the Marcus Foundation has two, and, you know, you know, you could argue there are other groups and organizations that do have larger numbers, but, I mean, you can...
Like, I'm all in favor of putting more members at large on that committee.
The biggest problem we ever had with members at large is trying to get quorum.
We can't get quorum now.
Well, and that's a problem, you can get four, like, right now, you've got two elected officials, and even if you have two from the town and one from the county, that's three elected officials, and then you're going to have five members at large, just one from the chamber. There's no guarantee that the chamber's going to send somebody, you know, or you can have somebody to show up.
If they have a chance, I can speak to the financial end of that and the representation. When it was a society, we handed over all of the money as a grant. We no longer do that. So the town holds all the budget for tourism, so ultimately you at this table pass that budget, and similar to recreation, and that's the way they went, you guys that sit on those committees just make recommendations accountable, so...
So I don't understand, too, is now this committee will be separate from the society?
Yes.
The society will remain the same?
Yes.
Two, and members at large, right?
Until the society decides to either...
Change their bylaws.
Change their bylaws or something.
Okay.
And the society's mandate will probably change, you know, the same as what happened to BBDS. And so that's when BBDS, you know, society decided to form.
One of the benefits of forming the committee is allowing to, recommendations to still come to council rather than just being directives from the community services manager or administration. Because of the change that we made in the format and going away from the society doing the management of the operations, this will allow the town council to have the final say in that budget and the operation end of things, but to make those decisions based on recommendations from a committee of people that are involved in the community. And that's why the jump in the number of members at large, because then hopefully you can get members at large that are actually invested in tourism as opposed to, I'd like to word this properly, but counselors that are basically forced to sit on that committee because somebody has to sit on that committee. So adding those extra numbers still doesn't get you that, that representation that you want.
Yeah, I can see that the society will probably go to only one meeting a year for a period of time, and then once their assets are all depleted or changed, then they'll do the same thing as what, you know...
We're hoping to assist the society to remain so that they can do one AGM a year so that we can access them for grant funding for the summer positions because those are applied through the society. So based on where we're at right now, is getting the society, assisting the society in getting their finances in order and get them into a place where they can, where they can operate on one meeting a year without changing your bylaws. Having said that, society is not going to change, so if they got together and wanted to take operations back over, take a proposal to council, then, and do that, so...
Okay, thank you, I respect all your comments.
Okay.
The one member from the Chamber of Commerce, has anyone...
Jason Thornhill is still coming as the chamber rep. He's, I don't, well, he's not on the executive anymore or anything, so I, I don't know. The chamber's never approached, and maybe it'd be a conversation with Jason, see if he would like to become like a county rep instead of a chamber rep.
Well, the four members at large though can come to any one committee, it's just that they'll be a point out in town, so...
Yeah, I just wondered if the Chamber of Commerce, you know, even really wanted to sit on it.
Yeah, they might not.
And the reason why we included the Chamber of Commerce is because the recommendation from the committee, as you saw by their motion, was to mimic the recreation committee, and the recreation committee has a member from Palser, and that represents that joint use in. Because the Chamber of Commerce was, is one of the three members of the society, that's why they were included, so... And being that this is a committee struck by council, you guys can put on there whoever you'd like.
You mentioned we could alter now or...
This was just what was thrown out from the discussion that you guys had.
Or alter later, you know, we can try it for a year and see, go ahead, sorry.
I was just going to say in response to the Chamber of Commerce, I think once the decision's made on this, it's something that we can bring up at the next meeting, it's on October 10th, I believe, and I, the chamber's got a, I think right now it's got a bit, they got some giddy up and go right now, so, yeah, I could take it forward to them, including them as a good thing.
Well, I really think they should be, I mean, for tourism, for sure, the Chamber of Commerce should be involved, but I just wondered if they had spoken on it or not.
I've just had one organizational meeting, Michelle's on, she's a director.
Yeah, and there's been no, I think, on any of the agendas that we've had so far.
Go ahead, Michelle, your question or comment?
A question, so this may sound stupid, I apologize. With the formation of this, then what is, like, the role with the tourism that's under the town currently? Like, in terms of Bonnie overlooking both? What's going to be the main mandate of the committee?
The committee, I think, mandate will still be under programming, you know, like, you know, the Solak philosophy of saying, we believe that we should run, you know, program A, B, or C out of the facility. They might make recommendations for the hours. It still goes through the same area, the same direction that the rec board or rec committee, so...
So the committee itself interacts with us as an administration to give us recommendation that we can bring to council to, because the operations of tourism now are the responsibility of the town of Vulcan.
And that's kind of what I was wondering, does that then change the operations kind of where, I'm trying to wrap my head around, because it just... And that's kind of what I was wondering, does that then change the operations kind of where I'm trying to wrap my head around because it just specifically to make recommendations to Bonnie and then have it then.
Yeah, it it, yeah, because it would not, it it doesn't, I mean, they have no authority over the directions that, you know.
Budget, that's.
Budget or even even the directions of hours, the hours still fall through administration, everything still stays the same. Philosophy, all it does is it's more of a a third sober thought for programming, you know, ideas coming from the public directly instead of it coming directly from council.
Thank you.
You know, and I I just see that the system with formation of this, it allows the society to, you know, fade out because of the and and maybe hopefully just still stay on as a as a, you know, governing body of the potential grant applications and that. Okay, any other thoughts, comments? Okay, somebody wish to move this or the formation of this group? Laura moves it. Any question on Miles' Miles' motion?
As as is.
As is. Okay, if not, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's carried. Okay, moving on to the full capital placement budget. We've discussed this one in the past of coming up with a budget and so administration has come up with some figures based on some of that information that has been gleaned over the last year.
This is the information that was sent or will be sent as costs for the grant application. These are the results of the RFP that was put out.
That's SWIMs law, what is that?
That's the.
Just because it's in there doesn't mean that we have.
No, I know, I just wanted to make sure that was.
I know that there there are two or three that are in there that are a thorn in some people's backsides. But unfortunately, they were a recommendation by that committee and so, you know, we put it in for the the full amount and then we can alter and change. So if you take a look at it as an example, we kind of recommend that we're proposing three million dollars and yet the total came to three million one hundred and fourteen without consulting fees, so.
So what we'd like to do is based on what I put in the summary, you've identified it in your five-year capital plan. It needs to be put in if you actually want to move forward with this project, you actually have to pick a budget. And we have to include it in the capital budget for 2019, so. This is the number that we have and everybody has for the last three years has kicked around all kinds of numbers. This is the number we have as accurate as we can get for what has been proposed to the committee so far. Now, having said that, after talking with the consultants for for project management, the best route from here, once the budget has been set, is to to design to that budget. So if you pick a million dollars, then you design a pool to a million dollars if you pick a pool at this. So Laura, that question about certain aspects of the pool, that can be eliminated or added on to based on your budget. So what we would like to do from here is put that capital budget in place. You'll know that the next portion of the meeting, I'm going to ask you to make a decision on project management. Based on those two things, that allows us to start the design of the pool, not the what we've been working with is this is the pretty thing that we might end up with. This will actually allow us to put a dollar figure and this is what you can have for that dollar figure.
And this does not include the project manager fees?
It does.
It does in the 3.1, in the 2.9 that I've asked you to approve.
Yeah, it's excluded.
And the reason why we did that is you are going to add this to the capital budget. We would like to add the project management to the operational budget so that the county and the town will split those costs 50/50.
And that was one of the discussions that came about from another meeting that we had with the county.
Okay, so the coal source doesn't necessarily have to be who we choose.
Oh, no, no, this we we will still design.
Numbers from them.
We still have to put it out to design, once council has approved the design, then it will be put out to tender. Once it's put out to tender, then council awards the tender and that's on construction.
Laura?
Just a question here with on the chart, we've got three million one hundred and fourteen thousand seventy-eight.
Yes.
The recommendation is for two million nine seventy-eight zero seventy. Is that the?
Less the hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar project management fees.
So the bottom figure was what we're applying for for the grant and depending on what we get, you know, but.
If if they approve the entire grant, we could apply it to the project manager's fees. Right now, we don't want to do that because we we need to have a plan to move forward.
Yeah, and we've had a discussion with with some of the other groups, contributing groups, and they would like to see it separated out to start off with.
Okay, can I just get some clarification then? So where are we voting on the two nine, two nine seven eight or the three one one?
No, the two, the two, two million nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand and seventy-eight dollars to be added to the 2019 capital budget.
Thank you.
That's the recommendation, you guys can make whatever motion you'd like.
If you want to make it bigger or smaller, that's up to you folks.
You're you're setting the budget for the pool, that's what you're doing.
You just got to remember, you go smaller, that means that there are things that definitely will be cut from from the gestimate of what the. So what they did is they took the information that was gleaned from all the meetings, they kind of drew up an RFP, sent it out, they got some some figures that came back and these are the figures that came back. And now what they're doing is saying, administration's saying, come up with a figure that we can afford to live with and we'll take that back and then how we're going to fund that is a little different, that's administration will come up and say, how are we going to come up with the money? And show us how we're going to, but we have to come up with a figure.
And when that does happen, so you will approve a budget to go into the capital end of things. When this time comes and if any of the funds are to be borrowed, you actually have to put it into a borrowing bylaw. Go through the same process we went tonight where we opened it up to the public for public hearing, all of that. So that's why our plan is to have these numbers as solid as we can because, again, we have to come up with the the easiest way to move this project forward, but to get the best dollar value, you know, value out of the dollars. We know that the Lions Club are going to contribute a certain amount, we don't know what that set amount is yet. We know that we're gonna glean a certain amount from grant funding, we don't know what that number is yet. We know that we would like to partner with the county on that. What that looks like at this point, we don't know, so the only variable is the town of Vulcan, it's a capital project for the town of Vulcan. So you guys are making a decision on what the budget is, whether you borrow money for it and how it will be repaid.
The borrowing the money for the financing will come back later.
Yeah.
This just sets the.
Right now, you're just putting it in the budget to say we're, you want to do this in 2019.
For whatever reason, I'm not saying they would pull out, the county says, no, we're left with 2.9 that we pay for.
No, no.
No.
This this approves.
In the budget.
We've, this approves to to expenditure three million dollars to this project. When it comes back with the funding mechanism, if the funding mechanism is a hundred percent the town, then that's our choice to either borrow.
One more chance.
Oh, yeah, oh, we've got.
You've got, you've got lots of chances, the public has a chance to have input on this, it's, this is to include it in your capital budget, saying that you would like this project done in 2019.
So this this, yeah, this puts it on the table for 219, 2019 project. So administration will bring back how they believe they're going to fund it.
We have to, we have to put it in a bylaw.
So they, so go ahead. Where can we?
Go ahead, Laura.
And then, like you said, and then we get another chance to take it back to the public to.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Quickly give it a final.
You betcha, yeah.
Because of the scope of the project and being that there's variables with the Lions Club, the the county.
And the grant.
We we and the grant, we've had discussions on, you know, if council decides that this is something they move forward with. The most logical way to move forward would probably be to do in term short-term financing for it. So basically, because we're responsible for the entire project. So the easiest explanation of it is you borrow all of the money to do it and you pay for it the same as you would build a house or you take the loan. You build it, soon as it's done, you apply your grant funding, your in-kind contributions, your donations and whatever is left. We talk to our partner being the county, we figure out a funding model on that and whatever's left, we then move to long-term plan. So and that would be through the AFSC we added to our download. To get to that point, you still have to do, any borrowing that you guys do as a council has to be done through a borrowing bylaw. And a borrowing bylaw does one reading, advertising, public hearing, and then two just increase reading. So you're going to, you're gonna work at this over several meetings if you would like to move forward with it, but that that's the process to get where you could actually get to construction.
And in theory, we could still back up.
You betcha, yeah, it, I mean, and and again, we could tighten a few things up, but sooner or later, we have to make a commitment. We're either in or we're not. And if we don't do it soon, it will not be a 2019 project, any of it, so sooner or later, the commitment has to be made that we have to come up with a figure.
They're building the pool or we're not.
Yeah.
So we're maybe better off to go high and can cut from there once we see where our funding's at or what people want?
Well, no, I think.
I just need to set a budget.
Yeah, set a figure.
So we set that, we're saying we're spending that no matter what?
No, 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 no.
But you're giving.
I don't get what you were saying.
Giving us that number to design on.
Yeah, we're saying that, you know, here's a figure, three million dollars, now design up into that level of three million dollars. Tell us what you're gonna do, when you bring it back, how are you gonna finance it? What what's the the facility gonna look like, where is the facility going to be at, all of that will come back to council to to prove. But if we don't put it in our budget now or soon, we will not be able to put it in for the 2019 project.
So that we're basically doing it because we're doing budget right now, is that why or because we want to say we're really doing this?
Well, I I think we we we've made three or four motions so far to apply for grants, we have met with our counterparts how we're gonna fund this process. We've had copious amount of meetings throughout the public and we've taken their wish lists and we've had two or three different committees that have met and come back with this information, so gone to an RFP which, you know, kind of tightened up the numbers to make sure the numbers are fairly tight. You know, and again, once, once you decide what we want to build, what how much money we have, then they'll come back with the tenure costs.
Design build is an interesting process.
This won't be a design build, this will be a traditional build, but we need to get a design that can actually be tendered and we currently don't have that. That's what the project management does, they take all of the stuff that we've gathered, we have thousands of man hours sent to this already, so.
Oh, I know.
So we're getting to the point where.
We have to move forward.
We're either moving forward or or we kill the project.
And if you want to kill the project, we, you know, we we've applied for a grant from through the Kinsman or through the Lions Club, I mean, for a million. And this other one we just approved, I mean, it it would look, I think, fairly poor if we're not willing to set a budget. And then we've applied for two grants and if we didn't get any of that money and the Lions Club is already committed to raise some funds, I think there'd be a pretty good ache on our face.
Well, I know, but I would just like to understand where we're at more than anything, not because I'm against it, I'm certainly for it.
But again, you know, this is where we set a a benchmark figure.
So purpose, for the purpose of the budget, you need to have it in a budget in order for you to borrow money. So if you do anything for this project, you have to borrow money for, you have to have it in a capital budget. So we have things and just for the rest of you have council, we have things that you add to capital every year. But if everything aligns, we will do this project, so I'll use the industrial subdivision as one of the best examples. You identified that in your capital budget for this year and because we didn't get the ground funding, or sorry, it was last year. Because we didn't get the ground funding, we didn't move forward. You would then again, this year, added it to the capital budget and one went through the local improvement process. The local improvement process was petition, so you didn't move forward with it. We're in the same spot here, we have never put in our capital budget, we've put it in our five-year projections, all of that, but we've never actually added it to your capital budget that you want to do the pool. So this adds that to the budget and says, we are going to put a dollar figure to it and like I said, this is the dollar that we have. You guys as council can set that at whatever you'd like, you can set it at one million and we can try to design to that. You can set it at five million and we would design to that, so this is.
Not being a builder, I don't understand all these things enough, I was just trying to get some clarification.
And this is, this is why we.
Certainly not against it.
This is why we provided the quotes that we have because that is the best information that we have so far, it's from these people. These are the quotes they gave us for the different areas of the project, so total, to do what the committee has put forward, we need 3.1. The committee identified project management as an important thing. I want that to be a separate motion, which I've already explained why, it's so that it can be put into the operational budget. So, because it's a, it's an important factor that stands on its own, so. So that's, that's where the dollar figure came from, i- if you would like it to be something different, you could definitely make that motion for sure. It's based on the information we have, what the committee would like to see in the pool will cost 2.9 approximately.
Okay, Laura?
I'd like to make the motion that we conclude in our budgets that the 2.9, two million nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand seventy-eight dollars.
Any further comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, Laura moves this, all in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to project management. There is those, there is two, hopefully everybody had an opportunity to read over the two proposals that were there.
If you would like to discuss the specifics of the proposals, they are confidential, so you would have to move in camera.
So if there's no questions on either one, then we can take the recommendation that came from.
I would recommend that we move in camera.
Okay.
Maybe because I don't understand.
Okay, so that's a motion for you to move in camera?
Yes.
Okay, Laura moves this in camera. Any questions on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried, so. We have to kick you two out for a minute or.
For a minute or two?
For however long.
Well, thank you for being kind as long as I was here.
Yeah, well, I've been kind.
Well, just making open.
Yeah, so Laura moved this out of camera, eight fifteen or eight fourteen or?
Eighteen.
And it was approved, all in favor?
No, no, you need a motion, oh, to to move in camera, yeah.
Laura moved this out of camera, it was carried.
Okay, now you need a motion to.
Okay, so Paul moves, that would be. Okay, any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to committee reports, FCSS minutes. Any questions on June 28th meeting? Okay, moving on to eight two, food bank minutes. I'm not sure if you guys approved this or not, but you went in, called to order at eight thirty and you adjourned at eight. I'm not sure if you guys approved this or not, but you went in, called to order at eight-thirty and you adjourned at eight-thirty, so the minute, the minute, I mean, didn't last at all.
It was quick.
I remember, right, it was really quick.
I, I mean, it's just, I would, I would alter it to eight-thirty-five, at least sometimes you last, you talked to it for at least five minutes, but I mean.
It has draft written across here.
No, I appreciate that, but I was just saying that whoever's gonna, I, I could care less in a way, other than, you know.
They're fast.
Then, then most of these organizations haven't figured out what in-camera means, what, um, um, tabling means either. So, you know, somebody should share with them wherever to his order, because they don't have a clue how they work. Any other comments or questions on the Food Bank Society's minutes? Okay, moving on to the elder abuse, and I believe this is the one that Michelle brought us up to speed on.
Yeah.
Any questions on any of the minutes there? Okay, moving on to golf course. Any question on anything there? Okay, moving on to the tourism society events. Okay, no questions on any others, somebody wished to, George Lee moves there, can you move a few points? Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to council reports, Mr. Taylor.
Well, I went to this little shindig up in Red Deer, which you've all asked. Other than that, no meetings.
Okay. George Lee?
I was also in Red Deer, which didn't end well. And I was at tourism the other night. And minutes are there, and there will be more discussion, I think, at the end with the in-camera, we'll discuss then.
Okay, any questions for George Lee? Moving on to Mr. Magnuson.
I went to AUM, AUMA pre-conference and conference, and I felt quite interesting, always something good to learn. And that was it for me for meetings.
Okay, any questions for Laura? Okay, Ms. Thomas.
Also in Red Deer, had some really great sessions with some info I can use in multiple parts of my life, which I, I find more useful. More relevant and easier to understand when I can kind of apply them in different places. I had the tourism meeting, which it's there, I think the committee thinks it's gonna be interesting, that's the only meeting I have.
Good, any comments for Laura?
That one that you went to that I missed, did you get any notes from it, and one wrote, if you can't say nothing nice?
Yes, I have stuff I hope.
Oh, good, I have it.
And they said they also were gonna post all your getting on the AUMA website too, like, you know, like.
The AUMA website.
Like if, if they have a presentation, it'll be on the AUMA website.
Okay, 'cause it looked really interesting, that one.
Yeah, and that, that one that we went to, the.
Try this one?
Yes, they, they actually handed out packets of all their slides, which I found really useful, because you could go back and kind of refresh as, 'cause sometimes they go through the information pretty quick. But I, I like that, that, that session handed out all of their slides, or most of them, I think, anyways, hey.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, moving on to Councilor.
I'm pretty slow, I was at AUMA as well, two-twenty, and on Saturday the sixth, they have the community futures board training.
Okay, any questions for Taylor? Moving on to Lorna.
I had the Marcus Foundation had a special meeting, just considering the viability and feasibility study. And the pre-conference session, and I did bring this, in case anyone wants to read some light reading. It was actually very good, it was the pre-conference one, community development through citizen engagement. And it's actually, just read the back part, they went through the front part, and then they told us that actually the back part was the updated part, which is the part you should have used in the first place, but that's okay, that's actually really quite interesting. And I attended sessions there from recycling to, I went by mistake to the enterprise risk management, which really was a disguise for the financial report that they were gonna give for the AGM, which was a little not my idea of fun. The affordable housing, which I didn't find terribly useful. The one I did like was the integrated project delivery, and Red Deer is using that model for their fire halls, their schools. The residences at, are at Red Deer College, and they're the kind of the gurus in Canada using this model. And I think, maybe when we get into some of our projects, maybe we need to have a quick look at that, or form them and find out some information, but. And the Vulcan County Health and Wellness are meeting, having meetings in each of the villages. They had one scheduled for Milo and Arrowwood last Wednesday, whatever day the horrible storm was, and so they canceled that. Tomorrow, they're having one in Champion and one in Lowndes on Thursday, which is also our communication meeting. And I don't know when we'll do the Milo and Arrowwood one, but some other time, just to give them an update on what's happening with the hospital expansion. I have not, nothing?
Okay, thank you, any questions for Lorna? Okay, move on to me, I had two, and missed a couple, and then I had a couple that were canceled, but I was at the one with Lorna, with Marcus Foundation feasibility study thing with. And it's progressing, and hopefully we'll house any results in the future, excuse me. And then I had a SAW meeting in Olds on the way back from Red Deer. And Paul and Kim came and sat outside and solved all the worldly problems, while we were in there creating some worldly problems. And what came out of that was those two applications for the grant funding that they're applying for. We have an executive meeting on Wednesday or Thursday, it's just a telephonic executive meeting. And other than that, yeah, solid waste was canceled, and so was the one today for doctor retention. Again, I went to a lot of the, I didn't go to the pre-conference, but went to a lot of the other ones, and some of us were in the same meetings, and some of us were kind of spread around, but. I guess questions we're gonna have is, again, soon is, you know, our attendance next year will be in Edmonton? And do we all wanna go again? We'll have to go on that sooner or later, so Karen, can you do some booking?
You do have it in the policy that everyone can attend every year, so really, it's just more letting us know if you don't, I don't attending. We'll book as soon as things are available and, and register, unless we hear differently from you.
And, and they do have it already planned, you know, the, the dates, so hopefully, and, and again, the pre-conferences, you know, quite often we don't know until quite close to what they are. But I think most that went to the pre-conferences felt that it was.
Actually, I found that much more helpful than the rest of the AUMA.
Well, unfortunately, you know, the, the bad thing about AUMA is, you know, almost half, half a day or three-quarters a day is the business side of it, you know, with resolutions and, and AGM and, and financial side, and, you know. Voting in your presidents and your, your representatives. So unfortunately, that's the business side of it, whereas the very first day is the side of more of an educational side, so.
And sometimes, like, I think I had four sessions, it's, it's almost broken down into two smaller section, you know, like you don't get a lot of information. You know, that was good for the council.
You just wanna stay in for the extra hour, yes.
But again, you know, if you feel that, you know, that we were asked to fill out that survey, you know, it doesn't hurt to let them know that, you know, some sessions should be a little longer, you know.
I did.
But again, I'm not sure how you, you know.
Yeah, I'm not about to sign up for their board, so I'll sit quietly.
Okay, well, anyway, thank you very much, any questions for me on that? Hearing none, now if somebody wished to move for information, Paul? Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Okay, moving on to ten point one, administration October action list. Got quite a bit done on that action list.
We got a pretty good rubber, yes.
Kind of short.
Our last meeting was fairly short, so people decided that they needed to be in Red Deer that evening.
Okay, any questions on the action list? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the CEO's report. Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, we'll move on to the Development Officer's report. So do we put out the, for the safety codes, do we put it all for tenure?
We don't, we reviewed it, and as long as we keep using.
Superior?
Superior, sorry, as long as we keep using Superior, we can renew the contract, if we do decide to open it up, we'll, we would then put it up to.
Yeah, I just saw that she kind of.
We switched from permit pro to Superior about seven years ago, like, seven, eight years ago.
Anyone heard the ads for the town?
Yeah, I did, I heard three or four of them.
Okay.
Or the head. Well, there, they got a young girl talking to her grandpa, and so I, I thought it wasn't bad, but, you know, it's definitely. I hope that it gleams something from them, but. Okay, any questions on any of Nancy's?
For the new business welcome package to, to be the solutions. They, they're not a good business. They've been around, but then they moved to a new building. So we opened, opened up, and we basically just informed them, like, being a renter in a new facility, they're expanding their business, hired a new employee. So we wanted to make sure that they, the business incentives, that sort of thing. We kinda, that we came from basically the strategic planning discussion on how we support economic development, that discussion about keeping and retaining our current businesses. So that, that's part of something that Nancy and I have been trying, is any new, any, any new people that are expanding, or, or we're gonna make personal business to them, I don't know. What resources are available, because I, I felt it was a really good visit. She didn't know about, she knew about community futures, but didn't know several of the things that they, that they can help with, well, didn't know about our business incentive. That would, you know, there, there's the incentive for the five hundred dollars, you can go towards rent or sign nature, that sort of thing, so. It's just one of the things we're trying, I think it was a good visit, hoping, hoping to be able to continue.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Okay, move on to Pubbers. So with this new condenser, it doesn't steam up as much either?
No, it doesn't send near as much water to the ground either.
No, no, I noticed that, and it's, you know.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to, it seems to be fairly efficient, and that's that glycol. Adding glycol to it, it doesn't need to run as often, so I don't think it heats as much, so.
Yeah, 'cause I was, I was by one day, and I thought, oh, it's running, so I rolled down my window, but there was no steam coming off, and it wasn't making that screaming noise either, so.
And the river that runs underneath it, and all those wonderful things, yes, it's, it's working very well.
Okay, that's good, did they have any issues when they started up, or did it kind of?
No, it seemed to go through fairly well, still didn't really, other than for some of the stuff that was happening elsewhere in town during, during their installation.
Do, do we have to do much when the current rate goes on, Ryan?
No, not with the condenser, because it's, it's a shared, so basically, one compressor comes on to the other, and it just calls for demand to the condenser one, so.
Okay.
We, we kept them independent enough that.
But they still use StanTech to.
StarTech, yeah. Yeah, so from the mechanical end, we now contract StarTech as one contractor, completely currently covered, they just pay a portion of it to make sure that the maintenance is up at the same time.
I was just hoping that, you know, it wasn't two different companies coming in.
No, no.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, anything else on Mr. Burch's? There's no, no opening and closing, is that the cemetery?
That's right.
Gosh, just the irrigation system.
Just the irrigation system that closes, that's right.
Okay, any other questions on Spies? Okay, we'll move on to Community Services Managers' report.
So it looked like falling into water was a worthwhile experience?
Looks like the fire department did well with it, yeah. I don't think I raised the whole six hundred dollars by any means, I think.
Did you sell the wet suit?
Hi. The long underwear that I have worked fairly well.
It's cheating, but.
I understand the person that went in after I did had the full ice rescue outfit on.
That's not fair.
Which, which is cheating. Or, or just biter smarter than I was.
Maybe the water cooled off.
You could decide between that.
Okay, any questions on Bonnie's?
I have one question.
Yes.
Where is, okay, so talk to the committee, committee member Jeff to help organize a Halloween event on his street.
Yes, Chinook, the cul-de-sac on the north side. If you take Peter Dawson Road, you go straight through, right in there, in the park. So there's a, there's a center green space in there.
And they're gonna make a stadium?
Yeah, I wanna put about a hundred and fifty bales in there, and, yeah, he's, he's gonna, he's gonna look after the laying them down and picking them up, talk with the fire department, as long as they have a fire extinguisher and people giving directions, so we'll see.
But it just wasn't in here, we're.
Yeah, I, yes. I, I caught, that's why I know the answer, 'cause I have wanted to say that when I read it, so, yeah, it'll be, it's in Chinook, and he's gonna take responsibility for the whole thing, I hope it works out very well.
Yeah, that would be cool.
Really, really nice event to have up in that corner.
Okay, any other questions on ones? Okay, moving on to the CBOs.
He was a very excited man about Wednesday last week. At the point when he came through, he had to run to Calgary to get it, because they didn't put it in the mail, 'cause they were afraid it was going to strike, so. So. He is now able to use his full authority, given to him by the province, so.
Okay, any other questions on Greg's report? Okay, if not, we move on to the Fire Department.
Four, that sounds pretty high.
For me?
Four for the first response. Are there none?
We, we have a couple institutions that, you know, Peter Dawson Lodge, extended care.
Is we, we have them?
Well, no, what happens is if there's no EMS in town, so, you know, they go over and start the process until the EMS shows up from somewhere else, so.
So it isn't a real emergency?
No, it's not abnormal.
There is a fire committee meeting on Thursday, including budget.
On Thursday? Isn't Thursday the night that we go to? Isn't Thursday the night that we go to?
No, it's in the afternoon.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, any comments at all on Peter's report? If not, somebody wish to move the reports? Oh, I gotta pick Laura. Laura, on question on Laura's motion, all in favor? Okay, now we're gonna kick you out again, huh?
Yeah, that's great. I see that.
We usually leave all our camera ready to last, so it doesn't go back and forth. Anyway, appreciate you taking the time and coming.
Well, I was just curious.
Yeah, so I need a motion to move in camera? George Lee? Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Yeah, thank you, it's carried. Move out of camera. Lyle moves to move out of camera at 10:03. Yes, 10:02, what time is it? Somewhere there.
Channel three.
Okay, any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Michelle moves to, all in favor? Thank you very much, everybody, for staying and all the worries.